Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. (877) 634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, March 11th, 2024, and it is exactly 6:02. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to discuss an open-meeting law complaint filed by Bill Enos III against the Select Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board hearing? None. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Moskali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye. Motion carries unanimous. The board will return to open session at approximately 6:30. I'd like to open the open session of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, March 11th, 2024. It is exactly 6:30, and the board is returning from executive session. I would ask, please, that you silence your cellphones, and if you are making either a video or audio recording of this open session, please notify me as the chair, and the recording equipment will not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. And I would ask you to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any recognitions from the board tonight? Mr. Brown?
Geez, I didn't write it down. I know there was something I wanted to mention. Oh, you know what I wanted to recognize?
Yes.
The public and the presentations that they were giving at these Saxon meetings, regardless of what the content is, the fact that these residents show up with PowerPoint presentations and so well-informed on so many different aspects of the project is very impressive to me.
It's a lot of work.
A lot of homework. A lot of work, and they're not just showing up to complain, they're pointing out important matters and really doing it well, very professionally. So, I recognize that.
Any other recognitions from the board? Announcements? Any announcements from the board?
I just mentioned that the Falmouth Education Fund is having their annual meeting, I think, this Saturday evening at the Kuna Mesa. They're honoring Mike and Doria Casparian this year. I'm not sure if there are any tickets available, but it's always a nice affair.
Thank you, Mr. Moskali. Any other announcements?
There's the Belonging to Each Others meeting at Leah McGuire's annual meeting on Wednesday at 5:00, in case anybody's interested in coming and learning about what they do.
Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Your comments will be limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Anyone here for public comment? Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lois Snowman, Precinct 5, and president of Falmouth Net, a nonprofit whose mission is to bring municipally-controlled, high-speed fiber broadband access to all the inhabitants of Falmouth. Some of my fellow board members are here with me. We are aware of a recent letter from the municipal light board to the Select Board stating a private company wishes to bring fiber to Falmouth, as well as a guest editorial in the enterprise making a case for this specific company. There are two basic approaches to having high-speed fiber installed throughout town. One approach provides open access to the fiber capacity for multiple internet service providers to use. The other approach is a private fiber network linked to one owner. The approach mentioned in the municipal light board letter and the enterprise article is a closed, private option. Falmouth Net believes that the citizens of Falmouth may be best served in the long run with an open-access network controlled by the town. It is the only way to guarantee that 100% of the inhabitants would be served by what has become an essential utility. It's the best way to ensure digital equity among our residents, particularly with the ending of federal subsidies under the ACP program. The company mentioned in the enterprise article is not the only company interested in coming to Falmouth. The MLB has heard presentations by two companies that would provide open access, but both require financial input from the town of Falmouth. We are investigating models that envision a partnership between the town and private enterprise. The town would provide the expertise and funding for the basic infrastructure, which it knows best how to do. Owning the fiber infrastructure, it then collects rental venue from the competitive multiple internet service providers who know best how to handle marketing, customer service, and billing. We hope the Select Board will keep an open mind and consider appointing an advisory committee to help it assess the great opportunities now before the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Eisenberg?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I've spent the last five years applying the expertise of my 39-year career in fiber optics and broadband services.
Did you introduce yourself?
My name is David Eisenberg. I grew up in Falmouth. I got a PhD at Caltech. I worked at Bell Labs.
Please speak to the board.
I was awarded the Distinguished Member of the SF Award.
Mr. Eisenberg, would you please speak to the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
At Bell Labs, if you want an introduction, I mean, I have a two-minute statement.
Okay. Do your two-minute statement, that's all you have.
Okay. So, I've spent the last five years applying my expertise towards an internet access network for this town, the town I love, the town I grew up in, the town I call home. You probably have all read my last op-ed in the Falmouth Enterprise where I suggest that we, that the offer that Boundless Networks has provided to the municipal light board is a very strong offer, and we should do a deep dive and investigate that offer. It's a really good proposal. It's the only proposal before our town that can be implemented in the near term. They proposed to build a network that would cover 100% of the town, and there's been some misunderstanding about whether it would be 100%, but the MLB and executive session confirmed that Boundless would cover every home and business in Falmouth. Falmouth should negotiate in good faith with Boundless to see if that would actually happen, if they would provide responsive customer service, if they would provide great plans.
You've reached your two minutes.
I have, I stopped to introduce myself at the request of the board.
I'll give you another 15 seconds, but I keep it to two minutes, like with everyone else.
All I'm saying is that we should negotiate in good faith that the, there's, the, Falmouth Net has gotten stuck on this idea of municipal ownership, but we've heard from Gigi Sohn, we heard from the expert opinions of the company that, that the Cape Cod Commission hired, CTC Technology and Energy.
Okay, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
That, that it's not necessary to have municipal ownership to have a beneficial, world-class fiber optic network in Falmouth. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else here for public comment? Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening, everyone. David Moriarty, Precinct 6, Falmouth, Massachusetts. I just want to briefly comment on what I read in the enterprise lately. I guess South Coast is still poking around, looking for a place to put their cable in their DC power plant, which is, in my opinion, a very dangerous proposition and should never be even considered for the town of Falmouth in a residential neighborhood. It's on top of our, the town drinking supply. Every home in Falmouth will be affected should anything go wrong with the dialectic fluid that is used to cool the plant. It will go right into the aquifer, it'd ruin everyone's drinking water. No one's gonna bond, no one's gonna come and fix our water supply, they're not trucking any water in for us. It's a disaster, it's a very preventative, obvious preventative disaster that we can stop immediately, and I just wanted to remind everybody how dangerous this is for the community and our property values. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will move into business. And our first order of business is to update and the presentation on the old burying ground. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our outstanding Deputy Director of Department of Public Works, Steve Cotterett, is gonna give us a brief presentation, I think 10 minutes, Steve, is what you have.
Maybe 10 minutes, yeah. Maybe a little bit less. I'd like to thank the Select Board for allowing us to come here and give this update on this project. This project, the first phase was to do a ground-penetrating radar survey. That survey's been completed, and this will present the findings in that survey. I know that probably you all know where this is, but some people, we do get questions on where this actually is located. It's right on Mill Road, there's an entrance with two wrought iron gates. This plaque that's shown on this slide is on the, on the side of the gate. This plaque dates back to some work that the town did in 1930, and the plaque is just a brief historical summary of the property and what's been on the property since the early 1700s. This is the report that was done. This report was done by Consultant Harris Consultants. They do ground-penetrating radar surveys, they, they do have a niche in that they do ground-penetrating radar surveys of archaeological sites and cemeteries. So, we were fortunate to get them. The work that they did is very thorough. We'll just present, briefly present the findings, and then we'll say, we'll present where you can actually access the report on the town website. So basically, we gave them five tasks, and basically, just to boil it down, their first task was historical research, so that when they went to do the GPR survey, they had an idea of what they were gonna look at. Their next task was to actually do the GPR survey, which GPR is basically radar in the ground. So they send the radar pulse into the ground, it gets reflected back, there's a slide of what the, the equipment looks like, and then they take that data to their office. It takes a lot of interpretation, you'll see when I show what the data looks like, that you really have to be a specialist to be able to figure out what that is. And then their last task was to provide this report. The historical section, basically, in 1661, there were about four acres that were dedicated for a burying ground. The oldest surviving gravestone in the cemetery dates back to 1705. The stone, the cemetery is surrounded by stone walls. Those stone walls were actually constructed in the 18th century, and then there were maps done previously of the cemetery. There's a map that was done by Smythe in 1903. A lot of what you read online about the cemetery, they reference the work by Smythe. And then the town engineer did a survey of the property in 1989. And both these maps, the one from 1903 and the town map from 1989, are provided in the report. This is a picture of the oldest gravestone in the cemetery, this dates back to 1705. This is the gravestone for Desire Born. There are other gravestones in there that are very difficult to read, there may be some that date back farther than that, but the ones that you can actually see, this is the oldest one that you can actually visibly make out the date. So the GPR survey, basically what I told you before, it's just like radar in the ground. What they did was, they came, they looked at the property, they separated the property, the cemetery into 10 grids, and the grids were laid out from the west end, which is near Mill Road, and to the east, so Grids 1 and 3 are the western portion, 4, 5, and 6 are the middle, and the remaining grids were in the eastern portion. This is a picture of the equipment that they used, so what it looks like is basically a golf cart with radar antennas on either side, and what they do is, they just push this across the ground. They have a display where they can see what they're, what they're seeing in the ground as they do this. So they'll just walk back and forth across this. This took them about a week to do the, the actual survey work. They were held up a little bit during, while they were there, there was, there were some heavy rains, which make it difficult for the radar to interpret the signal that comes back, so they, that delayed them a little bit in the actual physical work they did to the site. This is just a map of the grids, you can see how they, the grids aren't all the same size, the reason for that is, there were, if you go there, there are different groupings of stones, so what they tried to do was make the grids so that they could look at where the stones were concentrated, the smaller grids were where there are a large number of stones, the larger grids are usually where there's a, not as many. So this slide shows, on the right, it shows the, what the radar image looks like that they interpret. So this, we had them look at two different things. There's been something that can't be substantiated on where the original meeting houses were in Falmouth, so what we wanted them to do was try to look for archaeological features that might give us an idea if they could find somewhere where there was a meeting house. So what this, on the left, that white arrow is the image that you see on the right. So what they found was, there were some potential structural remains, and there was also, they had two distinct images that they thought were potential post, would be fence post, but they can't definitely say that this structure was an original meeting house. All they can say is that what they found was, the remains are come from some kind of structure in this, in the western portion of the cemetery. The other thing they were looking for were graves, and those were graves that were either marked or unmarked. So again, this white line shows the, is the area where the image on the right was generated. The yellow arrows point to graves that are, that had stones or markers, so they know that there was a burial there. The red ones are areas that they believe are unmarked burials. And what they do is, they look at the pattern, and you can, if you look at these, there's kind of a curved pattern where the burials are, that's from not only just the fact that someone, that there may be a body or a coffin there, but also when they backfill the hole, when they fill in the grave, it kind of gets a different signal than the original ground around it. So what, basically what they found, there's a total of 805 marked burials in the cemetery, but there are also 826 probable unmarked burials, and three that might be potential unmarked burials. So rather than just the 805 where you see the markers, there's actually 1,634 burials that they identified in the cemetery. There were six potential archaeological features that were identified, they were almost all at the, at the western end of the cemetery, and these features may relate to outbuildings, the original meeting house, pre-contact or contact area indigenous houses, or some other cultural features. They can only say that the ground is disturbed, they can't tell you exactly what was, what was the structure that disturbed the ground. And then, just to give you an idea of what these results look like, this is an image of the western portion of the cemetery. Those yellow rectangles are the marked burials, and the red rectangles are the unmarked burials, and those three probable burials are what you see in blue. So you can see the large number of unmarked burials that are mixed in with where there are actually markers. There may have been markers, if you go there, there are some markers that have been knocked over, or some that have been damaged through time. That may have been that some of those markers were damaged and they're just not there anymore. But there's really, there's no way for the records that they reviewed to tie the unmarked burials to a person or a burial. This is the middle portion. When you go to the cemetery, there's, there's a big identity of markers in the middle portion of the cemetery. So again, this shows the marked burials and the unmarked burials, and then the same thing for the western end of the cemetery. You can see in the western, when you drive into the cemetery, there's a dirt path that goes all the way to the back of the cemetery, to the eastern end, and you can see that in that corner, it was the end of the path, you can see the large number of unmarked burials that are there. But it's actually pretty fascinating that they could identify this, this many unmarked burials when they did this work.
And how would, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll wait till the end.
Okay. We, I don't, I don't think, they didn't expect to find this many, so this was kind of surprising to them also. They also said that of the sites they surveyed, this site, for whatever reason, gave them some of the best, clearest images that they had, so they're very confident about the results that they presented in the report. The report itself, if you go to the Historical Commission page on the town website, there's a link to the report, and the entire document is available there if you're interested in looking at it. And then, so what are we gonna do next here? We've retained a consultant to do a visual assessment of the markers that are there. She's gonna photograph those and catalyze those and prepare a plan that shows where those marked burials are. She has done work, if you're familiar with the cemetery out of White, she has done work in that cemetery, she's done fantastic work there, she's done a really good job with some conservation to, to do some conservation methods on the markers there. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is identify what conservation methods can be used to take the markers and make them so that, you know, they make them more either readable or at least get some of the, what's grown on the markers off those markers. And that's about it. I'd just like to thank the Historical Commission, they applied for the community preservation funding for the original visual assessment. We did that work, we arranged to do that work with them, and as a follow-on, we received community preservation funding to do the GPR survey.
Mr. Brown, did you have a question?
Yeah, when you were talking about if you go to the end of the dirt road, you can see the unmarked graves, but they're not really marked though, right? How would you?
No, no, I'm sorry. You can, you can see the area where they're located, I mean, there's nothing on the ground that would tell you they were there.
I see what you, you see a large area with no mark.
Right. It's just a large, open area at the end of the road. There's just, the cemetery is basically grass landscape, so it's just a large grass area that you would think that had not been used, but then when they get the GPR survey, it was surprising how many actual burials there were in that area.
Would it be possible to add a kiosk and a QR code so people could look at this?
Yes.
Maybe when they're visiting, tourists?
No, that's a very good question. So what we had, one of the goals of this was to prepare a plan, and it, and try to, we grid, we have a grid that's numbered and lettered. So what we would like to do is, at the end of the rows, eventually, put some kind of kiosk that had something that, you know, said like A3, and then the markers that are there with the name. She's been able to do that up at White. If you go there, when you walk in, there's a dirt path that leads in, and then there's a, you can take an actual fold-out map that has the grid and then the burials that are in each grid.
And maybe someday that people that had some time to kill could figure out, if, if you see three hatches in a row and then three unmarked, maybe they might be hatches or relatives, and maybe we could, you know, if this was on the website, people could look and say, maybe my relatives are in there, and this is why I think so.
Sure, yeah.
Might be.
What they were able to do in the report is, they overlaid what they found with the GPR survey on these earlier plans, so that, they tried to tie the historical information they had with what they actually found when they were out there now.
Mr. Moskali, did you have a question? Go ahead.
For the further work that's being done, is that, do we have those funds still from the community preservation, or is that gonna be additional funds we're gonna need to do that follow-up work?
So we have $25,000 to do the visual assessment right now. The cost of the assessment is more than $25,000, so we'll go for additional community preservation funding to complete the work. We'll need approximately another $13,000 to complete the visual assessment. And then, in the future, we would go for funding to do the conservation work.
Any other questions from the board? I, I find it fascinating, and I'm really happy that, that attention is being paid to that old burial ground, it's just amazing. Thank you very much.
It is fascinating. I actually took a trip to Prince Edward Island and looked for my ancestors, my mother's side, from Scotland, and it was really cool going through the cemeteries and finding the actual gravestones, and they take actually really nice care of them up there.
Okay.
So it's, it's a nice feature to have, you know, take care of.
I think that once we get to the point where we're doing some conservation work, I think you'll see a similar kind of visual impact when you go in there, and we certainly, visually, it'll be easier to see what's there, that it is right now.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move in. Discuss and vote to approve the move, the movement of the existing Oscar Wolf plaque, presently situated on the front of, facing of the Lynn Whitehead bandshell. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Select Board recently received a request from Dr. Whitehead in regards to an existing plaque in the name of Oscar Wolf. You have a copy, I think, in your pack, it's a photograph of that existing plaque. Just as some background, and I want to thank Dr. Whitehead for doing some of this research. The bandshell, as you all probably remember, was dedicated back in 1972 in the name of Oscar Wolf. The Oscar Wolf bandshell was subsequently rededicated back on August 25th of 1994. Madam Chair and Select Board, I'm told that by the mid-1990s, the, the size of the bandshell was inadequate. The band had grown, the town band had grown, so it was deemed to be kind of too small for the purpose, for the function, I should say, and it had also began to deteriorate. So as a result, plans were put in place to begin gathering funds to replace the existing structure. And that is where Dr. Whitehead's wife, Lynn Whitehead, came in. I understand she was responsible for, for a lot of the donations and kind of organizing that effort. As you all recall, January 8th of this year, the board approved renaming the bandshell, the existing structure, the Lynn Whitehead Bandshell. Madam Chair and Select Board, the Whitehead family would like to place a new plaque bearing the name of Lynn Whitehead on the front-facing portion of the existing bandshell, and would also like to continue to recognize the contributions and efforts of Mr. Oscar Wolf by reattaching the existing plaque in his name to another suitable location on the structure. So I thought it was appropriate to bring the request to the Select Board for potentially relocating the existing Oscar Wolf plaque to another suitable location, and I'd recommend if the board so chooses to go forward with the relocation, that we have the Department of Public Works remove the Oscar Wolf plaque and then relocate it to a suitable location.
Questions, comments from the board?
I thought we kind of implied this, but we didn't make it clear who was gonna do the work.
I think that's the one part that was missing that I felt, it would just be cleaner if, if DPW, and I've talked to Mr. McConerty with DPW, and he said that And I've talked to Mr. McConerty with DPW, and he said that his staff would be able to, to do that.
Yeah. I would move approval of the request to relocate Oscar Wolf Bandshell, unless there's an official motion.
There is an official motion. I can read it for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown. Motion to approve the movement of the existing plaque bearing the name of Oscar Wolf to another suitable location on the bandshell to continue to commemorate his contributions to the construction of the original bandshell in nineteen seventy-two, and to require that the Department of Public Works shall be responsible for the removal and transfer of the plaque. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we will move into discuss and vote to approve a letter to the Commission on Energy Infrastructure Siting and Permitting opposing the removal of local control and regional oversight for the citing of renewable energy facilities. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back in September of last year, Governor Healy established this new commission on energy infrastructure citing and permitting to explore ways to perhaps accelerate the responsible deployment of clean renewable energy infrastructure through citing and permitting reform, and to basically facilitate community input into that process of citing and permitting. The Commission on Energy Infrastructure Siting and Permitting began meeting in October of last year, I believe. They're currently seeking public input through March fifteenth on questions related to the citing of clean energy infrastructure. In general, the public's being invited to comment on four kind of broad categories related to the citing and permitting of clean energy infrastructure. I'm gonna go through this quickly. The first question broadly is how would Massachusetts balance the need to accelerate deployment of clean energy, ensure communities have input into the citing and permitting process, and lastly, ensure the benefits of the clean energy transition are shared equitably. The second broad category is how should the above be accomplished while also protecting the health, safety, and community livability, particularly for vulnerable or under-resourced populations? How should we accomplish the, all of the above while also protecting our environment? And lastly, who should have a seat at the table when decisions are made about where to locate clean energy infrastructure and what restrictions should potentially apply? More involved than those four broad questions, there's also an online survey of forty-four questions, and I have links in your packet. And for the members of the community, the packet obviously is posted on the website, so I'm inviting people to go and explore that forty-four question online survey. It is extensive. And it's also seeking input on several more very specific questions, covering topics related to the citing and permitting process, again, of renewable energy facilities and infrastructure. Again, broadly speaking, the topics of this forty-four question online survey include the definition of clean energy infrastructure, state and local level permitting reforms, potential reforms, environmental impacts, community engagement piece, community benefit agreements, and the process under the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, and the Energy Facilities Siting Board. And Madam Chair and Select Board, one of the questions asked in the survey very specifically concerns whether the creation of a consolidated state-level permitting structure would be supported by the community. Because town governments, it is argued, know best the local needs, appropriate locations, and permitting procedures that best protect the public health and safety, some would argue it's important to retain as much of the existing local permitting control as possible. So Madam Chair, you have a copy of the draft letter that's been prepared. This would go to the current Chair of the Commission on Energy Infrastructure and Siting and Permitting, Commissioner Mike Judge. You have a copy of that letter in your packet. It'd be, following the discussion, it'd be my recommendation that the Select Board approve the attached draft letter to the Chair of the Commission on Energy Infrastructure Siting and Permitting that would oppose any erosion of local control and regional oversight for the citing and permitting of renewable energy facilities, and then authorize the Chair to sign that letter. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Question?
Yes.
I wanna clarify. So the way this letter is written is that we do not want there to be a consolidated, basically one size fits all for the whole state. We want municipalities to be able to manage. But would, would there still be the Energy Facility Siting Board? Would they still have a role?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
Yes, they would. And, and yes, this is basically to, as I understand it, having done research on both websites, no further erosion or removing no of the, none of the current local controls with regards to citing and permitting. But the state obviously has a, has a significant role in that now.
It's a tricky question, because there is a need for them to do some organizing, and, putting this board together would be good, but not at the expense of our local zoning.
That's right.
So what I would suggest is maybe we add a paragraph at the bottom identifying the fact that we currently have, I don't know if it's a dozen, solar energy installation projects that are not viable because they're too large, and we can only do the two little ones. And I think that's a shame. I think what they need to do is fix the infrastructure on the grid before we start jumping ahead with taking away zoning protections.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, I think what Select Board member Brown is referring to is that current stay or hold through, is it ever source in the, in the utilities commission.
Yeah, anything above twenty-one KV.
Twenty-five?
It even limits, I think it's twenty-one point five. Well, maybe that's for residential. It even limits me on my own property because I have a proposal for twenty-five KW, but I'm limited to only twenty-one point five. So, I mean, the system is broken, and they're looking at eliminating our zoning control when they don't even have a grid that's functional? So I think, I think somewhere here in that letter, that should be mentioned. That should be their priority.
Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, I have a concern that, that this is coming to us on March eleventh with a deadline of March fifteenth. This is a, you know, something I've expressed on, on other issues. It, it just seems like a very short timeframe for us to analyze everything. I, I actually tried to follow that link, and maybe I was doing something wrong, but I couldn't get to the, to the forty-four question survey, which I would have liked to have gotten to. So I mean, I'm just expressing a little frustration that, you know, we're getting this without really having an opportunity to, you know, look, look at it more in depth. Appreciate the work that, that, you know, town staff has done on it. I'm certainly a proponent of, of local control, and especially in this town, given what's, what's happened in the, in the past. You know, if I had an opportunity to look at the letter and make some suggestions, I probably would, would change some of the wordsmithing around, but we don't really have the opportunity to do that with such a short timeframe. So that's just my comments.
I, I think we're lucky to have it brought before us at all, because it was not very well-publicized.
I agree.
So thank you for being aware of it.
I agree.
Wait one second. Anything else from the board?
No, I don't want to go too far with suggestions. I mean, if we could possibly add a paragraph, I think the body of the letter is good, but if there's something we can add at the bottom relating to the need for infrastructure improvement, I can less considerably add that.
Go ahead, Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening again. Dave Moriarty, Precinct Six. This is just a rehash of the WISRA bill. They've already tried this before, the state, with the wind energy reform bill, because our, we have these zoning laws to protect us, and, and they work well. And the state and private industry now, they're not happy with that because it's holding up their renewable energy. And they've tried, they tried to, to make an end run around our local zoning before, and it's the same old thing. What they do is they always put the cart before the horse. You don't build out in the ocean when you don't have anywhere to connect on the land. You don't teach, you don't put your kid in the boat, take him out thirty miles, throw him out of the boat, and say, okay, swim. You teach him on the shore. I mean, they've always had everything backwards. They want the consumer to pay for everything, that's why they do it this way. And they really not too concerned about the environment, our, our mammals, our birds, our bees, our bats, our whales, our dolphins, our seals. All of these things are at risk because of these projects. This is Cape Cod. These things, industrial megawatt power cables do not belong in Falmouth. They've already fractured Falmouth once. They've driven some of our best citizens out of town, bankrupted their businesses, ruined their families, never apologized, never did any. They, no one in the, in the State House or any of these agencies has ever come down to Falmouth and apologized to us for wasting twenty million dollars hurting some of our most precious citizens. Neil Anderson, Sue Halbar, the, some of the loveliest people you've ever want to meet. And they, they've ruined their families, and they've driven them out of town. And do you really want to give these people any more of your rights? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty.
Well, I think, I think adding in something like Doug was saying about just infrastructures, we're gonna have to hear. Otherwise, I think the letter looks good.
I do as well. Go ahead, Mr. Bosnowski.
Dave Bosnowski, President of the Falmouth Heights Samaritan Neighborhood Association. I'm pleased that the Select Board is taking the opportunity or, or to consider responding to the, the Energy Infrastructure Planning and Siting, Permitting and Siting Board. As, as Mr. Renshaw expressed, they have some very specific questions that they're trying to address, and we all understand that they're trying to accelerate the process to meet the, the state's climate and, and energy planning. There's no question about that. And I, they, I think we're all in, in favor of, you know, meeting that, that, those deadlines. But by the same token, when you go through the forty-four question survey, each question was a result of a discussion of the earlier meetings that took place of the commission. And some of the questions were, were very specific, and others were rather broad, but some of the questions were raised about accelerating it to the fact where you're going to diminish the input of the municipalities, of the community, of the Energy Facility Siting Board. They, there, and there is a question there, do we really need the Energy Facility Siting Board if we can establish a consolidated state board? They could diminish the, the, the input from the, the EFSP. They could diminish the EPA's in, input on it. And, and that's what we're really opposed to, just the, the concept of, of diminishing the input from these various different agencies, local municipalities, the community. I think I had an opportunity to review Mr. Renshaw's letter. I think it was very well-written. And if you did want to add something about the, our, our zoning rules in, in Falmouth about it in another paragraph, I think that would be a good idea as well. But I, I do think, I, I support the idea of writing such a letter. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening. My name's Lynn Shad, Precinct Three. I came to tonight's meeting because of this specific topic, and from what, and I admittedly didn't know very much about it, but it sounds like a lot of people didn't know very much about it. I am pleased to hear that the board is going to put forth this letter. I think while renewable energy and meeting our state renewable energy goals is extremely important, I think we also have to be stewards of our town and make sure that we do what's best for the town. So I'm a huge proponent of renewable energy, but we have to do it the right way. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I could make one last comment that.
Go ahead.
Since learning of this through the Select Board packet, I've been alerting as many people as I know in county government and in Cape Canaveral municipal leaders. No one else is aware of it. So it's really been under the radar, and.
And it was sent to this board by.
A resident?
A resident.
Okay, good.
And that's how we were made aware.
Thank God.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Do you want to discuss the added language, or I think Mr. Renshaw's got the idea right?
With regards to the twenty-one point five or twenty-five kilovolt restriction for throttling down?
Yeah. Well, I would move to approve the attached draft letter to the Chair of the Commission on Energy Infrastructure Siting and Permitting to oppose any erosion of local control and regional oversight for the citing and permitting of renewable energy facilities, and to authorize the Chair to sign the letter. And should I add to the town manager to make edits as discussed?
Amended as discussed. I would, yes, I think that would be good.
Madam Chair, I'll second Mr. Brown's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. Discuss and vote to approve a letter to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office related to the Steamship Authority's request for advisory ruling. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, as additional background, this is included in your packet, the Assistant Secretary issued an advisory opinion to the Steamship Authority June of last year stating in effect that the Steamship Authority's changed use of a parking lot in Katomet as a material change to the proposal that had been reviewed and approved by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the EEA. The Steamship, Steamship Authority subsequently responded to this letter from the EEA and sought to avoid preparing an environmental impacts reports. Madam Chair and Select Board, the board is being asked to consider approving a letter to the EEA which respectfully requests a full EIR or environmental impact report be required so that the Steamship Authority is in compliance with current regulations, so the impact of the changed use of parking lots can be thoroughly analyzed and evaluated. And Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation that the Select Board tonight approve the attached draft letter to Assistant Secretary Tori Kim, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead. Does it, it seems like this also gets to something we discussed at the workshop about the use of their parking lots?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Brown, any comments?
I appreciate the letter being put together, and I think it does the job. And we've, we've received a lot of comments from local citizens who have been engaged on this subject, and they seem to think the letter is well-done as well.
I want to thank Town Council specifically. She, she has just written.
Mr. Muscally?
Whoever's supportive of the letter would make a motion that, that the board approved.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimous. Okay, I'm gonna go through the consent agenda. I will read the items. If anyone would like to hold anything, please notify me as the Chair. Licenses, application for a three-special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Holy Ghost Society of Fresh Pond, Portuguese Festivals, four oh eight Carriage Shop Road, Sunday, May nineteen, twelve to seven PM, Saturday, June twenty-second, four to eleven PM, Sunday, June twenty-third, twelve to seven PM, and Saturday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, three to eleven PM. Application for three-special one-day wine and malt liquor licenses, West Falmouth Library Jazz Concerts, five seventy-five West Falmouth Highway, Sunday, March seventeenth, Sunday, June thirtieth, and Saturday, July sixth, all events from four to six PM. Administrative orders, approve inter-municipal agreements with the towns of Brewster, Yarmouth, and Mashpee for sale of surplus intermediate oysters.
Madam Chair, I'd move this consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we'll go to the meeting. Minutes of our meetings, review and vote to approve minutes of meetings, public session February twelfth and February twenty-sixth. Questions, edits, comments?
I didn't find anything of significance to me, and I appreciate them getting done so quickly.
Okay, I have one thing on, it's really foolish, but it's February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, page six of nine. Mr. Renshaw praised the period. Passion and commitment, just get rid of the period. I can give it to you, Mr. Renshaw. Mr. Muscally?
On the minutes of February twelfth, under announcements, it says that, Mr. Muscally said, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority announced free fares for people with disabilities and seniors through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I, I don't recall there being any end date for, for that, that program, so I don't know how that got in there. And I just checked the website, you know, before we came here, I didn't see anything limiting it. There's Charlie cards that are for people with disabilities and seniors, so I just, I don't know how that.
Do you want to strike that?
I'd amend it, yeah, to strike that.
And what page is it on, Mr. Muscally?
It is on the first page of the minutes for February twelfth, item number four. So would, would just delete the words through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Okay. Do you have that, Mr. Renshaw?
I do, yes, thank you.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to move the amended minutes of meetings of February 12 and February 26?
So moved.
A second, Mr. Scott Price's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to the Town Manager's supplemental report. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, a couple of brief but really important, been a topic of discussion lately in the community, updates that I want to give you. First, I want to start with a meeting that the Assistant Town Manager and I had with the Green Center and representatives of the Falmouth Pond Coalition a couple of weeks ago, back on February 28. Really productive meeting. We're trying to get the wheels put back on this urine diversion cart, so to speak, the project itself. I think there's been a lot over the past several months, perhaps some assumptions made that Town Hall was doing some things in the background. Quite honestly, they weren't being done. So, this meeting on February 28 was our effort, Peters and I effort, to get back on track. Productive meeting, I think everybody's got a common understanding. And if you recall, this all is tied to the November Town Meeting approval of, and Select Board's approval, I should say, of $80,000 in ARPA funds to a called preliminary study of the concept of urine diversion. We followed up the February 28 meeting with the Green Center folks and the Falmouth Pond Coalition folks with a really productive meeting last Thursday, March 7, with representatives of Mastech, which as y'all knows, the Massachusetts Alternative Septic System Test Center, both Bryans, the Director Brian Baumgartel, I'll probably butcher his last name pronunciation, and his partner over there, Environmental Project Assistant Brian Horsley. The real purpose of the meeting was for Peter and I to meet with these two, who we both think are going to be instrumental in kind of moving this project forward, and really just kind of discuss ways that Mastech's facility can help us in developing a scope of work project, a preliminary look. Coming out of the FinCom review recently, Article 22 specifically, there were a lot of questions, a lot, like a dozen or more questions, that really we were having difficulty, we, staff and I, and the Green Center folks and the Freshwater Pond Coalition folks answering. So, we feel like it's a good use of the $80,000 in ARPA funds to bring the Mastech folks involved in this, have them prepare a scope of work proposal for us. Peter and I are going to review that and then bring back to you hopefully a solid action plan for how we can best utilize the $80,000 in ARPA funds to really ensure that we have a well-designed and well-executed urine diversion project going forward to November Town Meeting of next November.
Is any of that, the $80,000, been spent?
No, it has not. No, it's just, and again, there was a lot of discussion about it, but quite honestly, and I've talked to the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Schwegel, recently, a lot of discussion, a lot of good intent, but not a lot of accountability in terms of who is doing what. So, the Assistant Town Manager and I are going to kind of take that lead and kind of marshal that process through, working with Mastech.
Does that mean that they're- Thank you. That the article for the funding, they want to, who am I tired? Remove-
Will they withdraw?
Thank you. For April Town Meeting and move it to November?
So, that would, so as I understand it today, the Finance Committee has recommended indefinite postponement of Article 22. I understand that there's a couple of folks from the Green Center who may be considering bringing a positive motion, April Town Meeting, to kind of, to have that discussion. And that's fine. We just feel very strongly, the project, there's so many unanswered questions and outstanding questions, to be really viable and effective, we would like to get those answered.
And frankly, some of the questions are not, not able to be answered at this time, like will the plumbing board accept these fixtures, and how will we manage the service for the people? If only a few people put them in and they don't get really adopted, will there still be a service to come and collect? There are questions that really can't be answered at this time, which I've spoken to a few of the folks that are proponents and explained to them, you know, it's hard to convince Town Meeting if you don't have support of Finance Committee, and Finance Committee, they're asking legitimate questions. I'm sorry, I'd love to see the project move forward, but it's not quite ready, and I've said that to the proponents. I think it's unfortunate that they can't seem to accept that because they feel the urgency of wanting to do this, and I don't blame them.
I agree with you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Muscally?
No, just a comment, there is going to be a public forum, I think on March 28 at the Public Library at the Herman Room, I think 7 to 9 for, you know, answering or getting some of those questions answered.
Right.
I guess I'm just perplexed that they were given $80,000 to start something and-
Well, Madam Chair, and honestly, I think that was part of the issue, is that Select Board approved the appropriation, but no one was truly given the money. So, that was the disconnect, quite honestly. The appropriation was made, the approval was made to use the funds, but the next step was who's actually going to be marshaling that, who's going to be expending those funds?
Right.
So, when Peter and I met with Mastech, I think we've got a good vehicle going forward and a mechanism to get the experts, right, the folks at Mastech, kind of looking at these issues. And like Select Board Member Brown said, we may not be able to answer all of the questions, but I think it'll put us in a stronger position over the next four to six months to have as many of those answered as we can. So, again, the project come November Town Meeting, we'll look to maybe perhaps include that in our capital plan for November Town Meeting.
Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead.
The, and lastly, this has also been a topic of hot discussion lately. I want to give a dredge update, and there's a lot of information included in your report, which you have a hard copy of, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but it's been a perfect storm of delays with regards to permitting. And talking to Greg Fraser, our MES Director, he reminds me that our previous permit, comprehensive, 10-year comprehensive dredge permit expired on October 31 of '22. We very timely started the process of renewal, and you can see kind of an explanation of those steps. The Army Corps of Engineer was the last federal permit, and it was like over a year overdue. And it took the efforts, and Greg was great communicating with Senators Markey and Senator Warren and Congressman Keating's office to try to grease the wheels in the Army Corps of Engineers, so to speak. That finally was done. We finally got the Army Corps of Engineer federal permit, the last permit that we needed. The equipment, the county dredge, the, I'll probably mispronounce the, the Codfish II was actually on-site in November of last year, ready to go. They had another project that they had to get, they couldn't wait. As you all probably know, there's time-of-year restrictions as far as when dredging can be done, and that's all included in this report as well. Unfortunately, the Codfish II had to leave to go to its next project, which was ready to go, and we were still awaiting the Army Corps permit. A week later, the Army Corps permit was approved and we got a copy of it. The dredge had already left. So, anyway, that was the perfect storm of, so to speak, of issues, permitting, and now over the past several weeks, weather. So, it was, it was the Cod, the sand shifter and the Codfish II have been working hard. There were some mechanical issues about four weeks ago on one or both boats. Seriously, mechanical issues on the Codfish II, the dredge that was responsible and going to be working our project. They finally got that fixed. They were leaving the Chatham area, heading our way. They had to stop and do some work in, let me make sure I get this right, in Harwich. They got the Harwich job done, but that was kind of delayed for a couple of weeks because of the mechanical issues. Long story short, we finally got word that, from Massachusetts DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, that our waiver of our time-of-year restriction, typically you can't do anything, and you can see the list, after January 15, from January 15 to May 31, because of all the delays in permitting primarily from the Army Corps. Greg Fraser worked it really hard and was able to get an extension, a waiver of that time-of-year restriction. We're now being told that as long as we can get the Codfish II, the dredge, here by the end of this week, and it's about a six-day project where we're limited to six dredging days, as long as that Codfish II is on-site by the end of this week, we're optimistic that we're going to get our projects completed. And as you all know, that's Great Pond and Green Pond, and then the Bourne's Approach dredged according to our schedule. So, that would take us, that would complete all of our dredging projects for this year. Going forward, we have to do a better job of working, and there's probably going to be some policy recommendations that we bring forward to you to kind of help kind of ease that process. Greg's got some great ideas. Greg Fraser is how we can kind of streamline this and become more effective. Perhaps it's a regional, and I think, is it Cape Cod Commission? There's a, there's a group that's talking about regionalizing the dredging, so it's not just county by county, because sometimes you feel like you're getting pulled in different directions, and the county does a great job with its dredging, you know, they're in the red, so to speak, and they're looking at their revenue generation for the dredging operation, trying to get more, to get in the black. But literally, I think the regional approach may be a better approach going forward, so it's not town against town or town competing against town. It's more of a regional, centralized.
Mr. Zalinski, I'll start with you.
You and I have had multiple conversations on this, and to speak with my constituency, they are in a lather about the money they have in their vessels, and, you know, the Army Corps of Engineer, engineers can say and do whatever they want. The questions people that I speak to are asking me is when there is an accident or damage to personal property because of the lack of due diligence on whoever's part to get this done, who do they go to?
Their own insurance company.
Pardon?
Their own insurance company.
Is that right?
I would think so, because you can't really sue it down in a county, right?
Yeah, sue a state.
Right.
It's a shame.
It is a shame.
This is one of your issues, Mr. Brown. Do you have any comments?
I do, we did-
Because you talk about dredging a lot.
I attended the Waterways Committee on Wednesday, and we talked about this specifically, that maybe it's time for us to reach out to Mashpee and team up on Waquoid Bay, because we are really at the same point we've been for two years, looking for a place to put the spoils that are in that channel. And there was an idea a couple of years ago to put a thin layer on Washburn's Island. It's a new, relatively new technique, but it's been used in many other states, but it's not allowed in Massachusetts because just, we haven't gone there yet. So, there's no place that they can figure out to land the spoils. Maybe on a beach in Mashpee. Mashpee's going to be doing a small project in one of their embayments that goes off of Waquoid Bay, and they're going to use the bags, that you fill the sand in the bags, put them on the beach for dewatering, because it's not suitable material for beach nourishment, so you can't just put it on the beach. So, we talked about the Waquoid Bay issue. They're doing a study right now to determine how many yards it really is, so we know the scope of the project, and the Waterways Committee was considering potentially breaking the job up into two or three different projects, because then it could be more manageable, because the beach is only so large for dewatering. And so, we're going to follow Mashpee's lead. They're going to be doing their dredging, I think, in the very near future, maybe it's in the fall or winter, and it would be great to make even more progress on the Waquoid Bay. Because right now, Waquoid Bay is very dangerous. When you enter that channel, you've got to go way to the left, very close to the beach where the people park, then you've got to go actually outside of the Mark Channel, because the Mark Channel is so shoaled that you really can't use it. They've already lost their, all their sailboats, and they've lost all their larger powerboats because they just can't get in, so they've taken their boats out and gone elsewhere. I don't know where they go, but maybe they've just had to get rid of the boats, I don't know. But we're way behind on dredging, and I know you're right, we're getting done what we expected to get done this year. We might not get the Bourne's Pond done, but that's not as critical as Great Bay and Green Pond. They really can't get in there either.
May I? So, the question I'm asking is, did you say we only have seven days to do it once they get here?
Six days of dredging.
So-
It's going to be tight, and I think Greg is not that hopeful that the Bourne's Pond will get done.
Yeah, it depends, it's so, all this is so weather-dependent.
Because they also want to do the inside of the Great Bay, which requires some breakdown of the gear to get the-
Right, true. That's true.
So, we'll be lucky if they get that and Green Pond done according to the consensus at the meeting.
Anything else from you?
No, Madam Chair, that's all.
Okay. We're going to move into Select Board Reports. Mr. Muscally?
I attended the Bike and Pedestrian Committee meeting on March 6. They continue to have very productive and well-run meetings. The one issue that stuck out for me when they were discussing it was the possible imposition of Chapter 70 town-wide, the 25 mile per hour, changing the speed limit in town to 25 miles. I know it's open for discussion, but they were very concerned about it and obviously in favor of it, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I attended a meeting at the location of the proposed gate at the Black Beach roadway, where it meets the bike path-
Yes.
And the Environmental Protection folks were there, attorneys for both groups, and just, really was just a chance for the DEP and the environmental consultants and the attorneys to speak and get an understanding of the project site. It was well-attended by a lot of residents, and got to ask a couple of questions about how they feel like the roadway cutting across private land is, you know, what's the interaction? They weren't really inclined to get into the legal discussion. That was a thing I wanted to know, is, you know, what impact that has, but I didn't really get that answer. But it was interesting to be there and see the actual spot where it's going to be happening in case by some chance it comes to us. It's going to be good to know. Waterways Committee, I already mentioned. Also, on Friday, myself and a couple of other local residents involved with the broadband issue, had a meeting with Senator Markey's staff to understand what potential there is for grant funding to help with the Falmouth Fiber Network, and we had some high hopes about, you know, multiple millions of dollars that might help the town buy into a network, but the reality is that the congressionally-directed spending is what they control, and that's when they put budget appropriations. But it was interesting to learn that there are possibilities to put in requests, and now is the time to do it. So, if we felt like we wanted to get some money towards a municipal broadband initiative, identify things like maybe a general manager for the municipal light plant, maybe some actual funding for their group, so that they, they're not just left out there with no money, so that if they want to hire a consultant, or maybe they need some legal advice, maybe they would have some resources, so.
Doug, excuse me, what group?
It's Congress. It's-
No, no, no. Additional money for what group?
Municipal Light Plant Board.
How much have we given them already?
I don't, not aware that we've given them anything.
They didn't get any funding at all for this yet?
I don't believe so. And there's no real-
Falmouth Net has money that they receive.
They raised money independently, and they got $100,000 to Senator Moran's office.
Yes.
Right. They have a brand, that money is still there.
Yeah, okay. And so, I'm going to suggest that maybe we look into that and consider putting a request.
So, Madam Chair, if I may? So, three months ago, I attended through Senator Moran's office over in Bourne at the PD, Bourne PD, they had a meeting to talk about the discretionary spending, and there is a process, an application process. It's my recollection, and we certainly will follow up on it. We may have missed this cycle. It's limited to about, as I recall, her staff explaining $50,000. It's not, it's not a tremendous amount that's available per project.
Well, for this one, this particular project, I tried to take some notes, but it was going pretty fast. I don't know, but there's a Community Development Grant Program, there's BEAD, and I don't know what the B, B-E-A-D stands for, but the guys I talked to, Mark Lanigan, he's the technical expert on broadband issues, Ben Tominis, who is the Regional Director for the 9th Congressional District, and Mike Messera, who's the Program Requests Coordinator, they were saying that the programs that they administer usually go to one to $2 million and top out around four or five.
Yeah, yeah, so if we move the BEAD and the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program, is different than the discretionary funds that the senators and congressmen have-
I think the reason I wrote those, because they were saying those might be alternatives.
Okay, yeah.
If we weren't successful with the congressional, congressionally-directed spending. But he said that actually right now is the time, April, March to April is when applications are requested, and then it takes probably, the House maybe gets through it June or July, the Senate July or August. If funds are awarded, it's not going to be mid till late 2025, but the sooner we ask, the sooner we get help, and who knows what's going to happen with these companies that are showing interest in Falmouth. We don't know if it's really going to develop.
And the MLB, and I'm sorry, the MLB may be, is a separate legal entity, they may be able to actually make application too. be able to actually make application too. I don't know. That would be something to check on too.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Brown? Mr. Scott Price?
Nothing this week.
Mr. Zlinski? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. What?
Second.
Oh, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is it daylight savings time?